Okay, we're gonna open the Monday, February 5th, 2018 Board of Selectment Meeting at 6:30. Do we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we don't have any resident comments tonight, so we can move on to the warrants. I'll make a motion, motion to approve payroll warrant number 18-31 in the amount of $158,451.38.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to approve bill warrant number 18-31 in the amount of $1,301,710.35.
Second.
Any further discussion?
What are the drivers on that, please?
So, the largest is the Penn Tucket assessment at $772,000, and then about $400,000 in light bills. The town bills were $45,000, and then the rest was water and sewer and withholdings, and then $31,000 in snow and ice.
All those in favor? Okay, moving on to appointments. This is for the Personnel Advisory Board. Just for clarification, this is to review the existing personnel bylaws and make recommendations to the board. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that? Is that what you see the charter is?
No, I think that's what the charter is.
Okay. So, first up, we have the appointment of Stan Teszynski? Is that right? Sorry. 43 Washington Street, Groveland, to the Personnel Advisory Board effective February 5th, 2018 through June 30th, 2018. This is an annual appointment and would be up for reappointment on July 1st, 2018. Can you go up to the podium, please? So, we all got information that you submitted as far as your background, and it looked like you had managed several teams before, and I'm assuming in those roles you had to deal with some kind of company personnel laws and regulations?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Bill, do you have any questions for him?
No, I've read your packet, and everything looks good to me, and I know you personally, and I think you'll do a good job for the town of Groveland.
Thank you.
So, I'm good with it.
Lisa?
Have you seen a copy of the current personnel bylaws yet?
I have not.
Okay.
So, if, I don't know if you followed any of the meetings prior to this, they're pretty outdated.
Okay.
When was the last time they were updated? Ninety-six?
About that.
Yeah, so they're well overdue for revamping, so, like I mentioned, the first step would be to review them and then recommend changes as far as updating them on what other towns have and, you know, 2018 versions.
Okay.
That's all I had. If you guys don't have anything else, we can, someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint, appointment of Stan, I'm only gonna attempt to last name, of 43 Washington Street, Groveland.
I second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So, I'm assuming Denise, the next step will be you'll send out an email so that they have each other's contact information, and then?
Yes.
You'll give them, I'm assuming if they wanna schedule a meeting, they'll have to go through you.
Yes.
Next up, we have the appointment of Mike Batcher, 8 Merrimack River Road, Groveland, to Personal Advisory Board effective February 5th, 2018 through June 30th, 2018. This is an annual appointment and would be up for reappointment on July 1st, 2018. You up to the podium, please? I've pronounced your name wrong. Barker? Barker, I'm sorry.
It's fine, it's pretty close.
So, you also submitted information, and it looks like you have quite a bit of management experience.
I do.
Okay. Did you also deal with the personnel regulations for the company?
I have.
Okay.
I have, and I have also gone through, you know, job description analysis and leveling project for part of the org before.
Okay. Lisa, any questions for him?
No, I know Mike, so...
Okay. Bill?
No, I've read everything, and I'm pretty happy with it, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Have you had a chance to review any of the existing bylaws?
I haven't.
As we just stated, they're really old, and they need some revamping, so it's gonna take a little bit of time to figure out what they are, what they mean, and then what recommendations would be for updating them.
Yeah, I understand. I agree completely. That's the first step, is review what we have, and maybe get some benchmarks from what other towns have done.
And you, you went to the University of Michigan?
I did.
It's always a plus in my book. I did not go there, I wanted to go there, but I chose somewhere a lot warmer.
I'm originally from Michigan.
Are you?
Born and raised, yeah.
Yeah, love that school. Someone make a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Mike Barker to the Personnel Advisory Committee?
Board?
Personnel Advisory Board.
Personnel Advisory Board.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have the appointment of James Snow, 11 Burke Street, Groveland, to the Personal Advisory Board effective February 5th, 2018 through June 30th, 2018. This is an annual appointment and would be up for reappointment on July 1st, 2018. So, do you go by, do you go by James or Jim?
Jim.
Jim.
Yes.
So, you also submitted information, it looks like you have a lot of experience, especially with municipalities, yeah.
Municipal, yes, yeah. I've been a municipal employee in the town of Swanswick for over 34 years.
Great.
So, you can get their personnel information, right?
I have a lot of contacts through my union position, too, that I can, you know, reach out to other unions across the state and get personal bylaws, and I'm well versed in both collective bargaining law, and I'm in collective bargaining right now for a contractor. I've been on my executive board of my union for 33 of my 34 years, so I'm extensive municipal, and I worked with Denise, too, in the back when she worked in Swanswick, so I do have a lot of information. I think I could bring a lot to Groveland and help you with your...
Yeah, it looks like you have a lot of experience, which is great.
My resume right there was one page, but...
There's more to it, yeah.
A lot of it up here.
Bill, you have anything?
Nope, I know Jim, and I think Jim will do a hell of a job, and I think we'll be good.
Looking forward to helping the town.
I'm all set.
But there's only three of us up here, does one of you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jim Snow to the Personal Advisory Board.
I second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Appointment of Elizabeth Zimmerman, 19 Pandora Drive, Groveland, to the Personal Advisory Board effective February 5th, 2018 through June 30th, 2018. This is an annual appointment and would be up for reappointment on July 1st, 2018. I think you said that she was not gonna be here tonight, right?
Yeah, so Elizabeth is not able to make it. I did tell her you may or may not make her appointment until you get to speak with her. She, I believe, is available at your next meeting if you wanted to hold off, but I'll leave that to you guys.
I read through her resume, it looks like she also has manager and supervisory experience, but...
Yeah, and I'm comfortable with moving forward, 'cause otherwise it would delay.
Bill?
I'm good with it.
So, I would make a motion that we appoint Elizabeth Zimmerman to the Personnel Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? We have appointment of Lynn Stanton, Director of Council on Aging, to the Personal Advisory Board as the employee representative, effective February 5th, 2018 through June 30th, 2018. This is an annual appointment and would be up for reappointment on July 1st, 2018.
Greetings.
Good evening.
I am a longtime Groveland employee, former resident for 20 some odd years. I was actually a participant in the former Personnel Advisory Board back in the day. As has been noted, the bylaws are outdated. They are available online at our website for anybody so inclined. Looking forward to working with good people, as I work under those bylaws, so I have a vested interest in it as well.
And you'd probably know them pretty well.
Pretty, pretty comfortable.
Yeah, good. Any questions, Bill?
Not at all. I know Lynn, and I think she should be the right person for the town.
No.
I'll make a motion to, yeah, sure, elect Lynn Stanton for the Personal Advisory Board.
I second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the appointment of Larry Fisher as an alternate electrical inspector effective February 5th, 2018 through June 30th, 2018, at a rate of $25 per inspection.
Mike, just, you skipped one, so make sure you go back to one.
I did?
Yes.
You're right, I did. Is Larry here?
I, no, I don't believe so.
Either one of you have questions about Larry's appointment?
I don't.
So, let's just see, that's a recommendation from our building inspector. Later on in your packet, our existing building inspector, Al Seavey, has resigned, so we are posting that position, but in the interim, we need to have alternate inspectors available. So, John McHale has been filling in, but we realized an appointment was never made in that position, so his position is more formality, and we'd like to add Larry into the mix, so we have two inspectors available.
Bill, any questions?
No, I see that Larry's in West Newbury, and I know the other one's been filling in, so I think I'm, I'm good with it. And I, I'm building inspector, I would cherish whatever he says, so I'm sure Sam's done his due diligence, so I'm good with it.
Lisa?
I'm fine, thank you. I would make a motion that we appoint Larry Fisher and John McHale as alternate electrical...
Do them separate. Let him read his first one. I skipped Logan by...
Okay. Do we have to do them separate? I was just gonna try to do it as well.
Do we do them all together?
Sure.
Okay.
So, that John McHale and Larry Fisher be appointed as alternate electrical inspectors for the time period to...
Through June 30th.
Through June 30th of 2018.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? All right, I guess I don't have to read that one. Next up, we have discussion, possible vote. We have Brian Belfore, EMS Coordinator, and Lieutenant Daniel Briscoe, Groveland Fire, to present the updated EMS service zone plan with Class V update.
Brian Belfore, how you doing?
Good, how you doing?
EMS Coordinator. Lieutenant Briscoe. Coming in, I think you have in front of you the proposed updated service zone plan that we need to get updated, since we now become a Class V ambulance service.
Mm-hmm.
So, up here to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, so, we got one, we got one, I guess, proposal about two weeks ago, and then we got one at 4 o'clock today?
Yep.
With some updates, and there were a couple of changes. One were minor, which was just contact information for the acting chief, but the other ones were a change in response time from 13:59 to 12 minutes.
Yep.
Now, were they 12 minutes from the first proposal, way back when, when it was first done in like 2015?
Yes, so, John Brickett's the Executive Director of OEMS, I'm sorry, for Region 3 EMS, he gave us the updated version. Until after I'd submitted it, I noticed the times were off. I contacted him, he got back to me today. I have the original plan, and it was at 12 minutes, so I changed it back to where initially where it has been.
But why did, why was it changed? And I don't know, I'm asking...
I don't, we don't, we don't know, but the original accepted plan that we're operating under now is 12 minutes.
Right.
So, the amended plan that we originally submitted had 13:59, and we don't know how that got changed, but that hasn't been signed, it's not official, that's just a, it obviously hasn't been signed by you, so it's not in action yet.
Right.
So, that was a mistake, and it's been changed back to what it was on the original plan.
Was there, maybe it was just an error in typing, I mean, I don't know what it was, but was there any reason why it would have wanted to be 13:59 versus 12? Do you know of?
I don't know, I don't know why they would have, it just creates another two-minute window where, you know, we're waiting for an ambulance.
Right, but it, wouldn't that two-minute window create a higher percentage of responses? Like, 'cause the 13:59 or the 12 is a 90% response time, right? 90% of the time, they have to respond within either 12 or 13:59.
Yep.
But if it was 13:59, wouldn't they more easily meet that 90%?
Yes, they would, yes.
Okay.
So, what's their percentage right now?
So, I just looked at numbers from July, June, July, August, they're at 50%.
At what's the rate?
Forty-two calls they did in July.
At 12 minutes, they're at 50%.
Okay.
What are they if you use the 14-minute number?
75, 80.
Okay, so have, have they been part, are they aware of this change, and have you talked to Trinity?
So, the only change in the document, to the proposed document, is us going to a Class V ambulance service?
Yeah, one other time.
So, the time is remaining the same from the accepted plan now. The only change was the draft document that we submitted to you got bumped up to 13:59 somehow, but that's not a document that is official in any way. So, the official document that exists now says 12.
So, I just wanna understand the rationale and sort of what the process was to get to the 12.
That 12 was developed through the process of creating the zone plan, which has been in the process since 2011.
Okay.
Finally accepted in 15, I think?
May 13th, 2016.
Sorry, submitted in 15, accepted in 16.
So, does the state have a mandated time, 12 or 14, 9, or whatever, or 13, 9? Do they have anything that they want them to fall in?
Goes by jurisdiction.
Okay.
So, we don't have a designated ambulance dedicated to the town, so it would be acceptable for it to be a little longer, because they're knowing that they're coming out of here while not coming from Groveland.
Right, but, so, they, they don't have any ink saying it has to be 12 or 14, so why wouldn't we give them, and I'm not trying to put anyone in harm's way, but why wouldn't we give them the 13:59 or the whatever that other number is? To give them, if they're not, if they're, if they're at 50% at 12, and they're doing better at the other, and there's been no real harm or no one getting hurt, why wouldn't we give them that extra time? The two minutes time?
I'm saying we can't.
So, what happens, what happens if we go with the 12-minute number, and they're meeting at 50% of the time? Is there recourse for them not meeting that?
So, according to the service zone plan, we're supposed to be getting monthly report, time reports, and it's supposed to be given an explanation with why they're over their time, a lot of time. I've seen time reports, I just haven't seen any explanations, I don't know that we've been asking for them either.
Okay. So, I guess, my thought is, is I would like Trinity to sort of be at the table as well, and if they feel that the 12, I just would like to see the dialogue piece, as opposed to just changing it to 12 and not having Trinity sort of be part of that.
No, we're not changing it to 12, it's already 12 now.
Well, no, but it was...
I don't...
But they're, I think they're operating under the understanding of 13:59, is my understanding right now.
Do you know what last, the last communications on this with them directly was?
Probably not, I don't.
So, you're assuming that they're operating under the 12-minute?
Well, we're assuming that they're operating under the accepted zone plan that exists for the town, so if they're at 13:59, I don't know where they got it from.
So, I know May 13th, 2016, when this plan was signed and updated, they were copied on this zone plan.
And that one was a 12 minutes?
It was 12 minutes.
They were a part of this development, right?
Okay.
They're listed in the plan, their managers were at the meetings, and that's an accepted document.
And this was 2016, you said?
Yep, May of 16.
So, do you, and maybe you do, maybe you don't, but do you meet with them regularly to rehash these programs and update everyone and the new personnel that come in? Like, so, if Trinity's on, at the table, the fire department's at the table, the police department's at the table, the selectmen at the table, we change over every year. So, do you have plans to do this regularly, like every year? Because some of that information started seven years ago, right?
Service zone plan, every three years is supposed to be updated.
Right.
So, this has only been, or, every three years, or unless there's a change. So, we're going from being first responders to...
Class V.
Class V ambulance.
Yeah.
So, we can operate as EMTs.
Right.
So, that, that's what triggered a change in the document.
So, the requirement is every three years?
Correct, or a change.
Or a change, but is there anything that you guys plan to do above and beyond that, like every year? I just think it'd be better to have everyone at the table who's responsible for this, you know, kind of meet and be able to say, yeah, we're all in agreement, we all understand it's not 13:59, it's 12. We understand, you know, what my responsibilities are, what your responsibilities are, I just think the more communication would be better, and I think, you know, you're obligated to do it every three years or when there's a change, but I think if you did it, you know, an hour every time the election happened, especially on this side, so the new people can be up to speed on what happened previously and then what's going forward, I think that that would be more beneficial to everybody.
So, I think in essence, Mike is asking if, moving forward, it would be possible to have something on an annual basis, so that anybody, so for instance, I was new this year, I didn't know anything about the zone plan, just to ensure that there's continuity and people know sort of what the current practice is, that would be a way to ensure that this board was all on the same page and everybody knew each year what the expectation was.
What would that look like? Would that look like everybody coming in here, or can you guys meet outside of the...
No, no, no.
Well, it would be, well, I mean, be representative, probably the chairman, whoever that is, to meet with that group.
Do you want to set up an annual meeting with everybody that's involved with EMS?
Right, 'cause we can't meet, you know, in a...
Any odds to just talking about the plan?
I think that that'd be more beneficial.
So, it could be like a check-in, basically, so on an annual basis, it's sort of a status update. Here's what we continue to do, here's how it's going, is there anything that we need to tweak?
Okay.
Yeah. You have a question?
I just have a question, so you said May of 2016, so theoretically, it needs to be fully updated by 2019. So, what point are you gonna start that? 'Cause now, you know, it's pretty much a little over a year that we're gonna have to have a new plan in place. So, how long does it take to really go through and meet with everybody and get a full plan redone?
From my understanding, talking to John Brickett, this would be a fresh start.
Oh, so that starts the timer back over?
Right.
Okay.
That's the understanding I got from him.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
No, so, I mean, I'm comfortable with making a motion that we accept it as is, with the understanding that, moving forward, you're going to be doing a status update with us on an annual basis with at least one member of the board, just to ensure that there's sort of...
I think it's a great idea, and if you wanna set up, you know, July 1 or something around there.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea, and we can kind of go over what happened over the last year, you know, if response times are different or need to change, or, you know, it can be talked about, and then if it needs an amendment, or the next time it's renewed, things can be brought to the table.
Well, she has an amendment, do you wanna second that, then further discussion?
Did you make the motion?
I did, yeah.
Do you wanna second it, then have further discussion?
Yeah, I'll second it with further discussion.
All right. Go ahead.
I second it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the only part of this I'm not comfortable with, and it's down, we can have the conversation, have you guys had any kind of annual meetings with Trinity at the table and say, listen, only 50% of the calls are at 12 minutes, and we got this at this number? Have you had that conversation, the dialogue back and forth with Trinity?
Not as of yet.
Okay, so, I would, I would definitely press forward this, if you guys could turn around and have a, you know, that dialogue with them?
So, moving forward, we aim to get the monthly updates and address these concerns as they come up.
Right, but what I'm saying is, because it doesn't sound like you guys had that dialogue at the table with Trinity, maybe sooner than later, you have that conversation with them.
Assistant Chief Kurt Rochala, and just to clarify that, we just got these reports. We've been asking for three years, and we just got them.
Well, they do send reports, 'cause I'm copied on a lot of those emails.
Yeah, we've just received these.
Okay, but they do, they have been sending reports.
The no run reports. So, we always did plan to talk to them.
Okay.
But we just started getting them in, so we're reviewing them, and the plan was to sit down with everyone and go over them, including our own missed calls, from the standpoint of the call fire force. We do have those, we, we're addressing those also.
So, you're referring to, you're just getting the ones from Trinity?
I believe that's, that's the case, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say probably this fall is the timeframe we've got them, we started getting them.
Okay.
So, it's not like we've had them and we haven't been doing anything with them, we just started receiving them.
Okay.
Are those gonna be consistently coming now, or is that gonna be once a year that they're gonna resupply those, against every month?
They're supposed, the plan is supposed to supply them every month.
Yeah, okay.
So...
Because that would be great historical data, that you could know that, you know, in the summertime, these happen more often, or whatever this case may be.
Right, exactly, and that's where we, you know, you can't plan unless you have the data.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and I can forward some of those emails, 'cause they have sent reports along.
Okay, good, thank you.
And maybe Kurt doesn't have them.
Right, so I could forward them, too.
That makes sense.
You'll sign?
Yep.
All right, so, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? So, I have to sign this? Is that...
Yes, so there's the hard copy to sign.
So, Mike, they just asked that, that's the new one that says 12 and not 13:59?
Yes, that's the one that Brian just gave me.
And you guys will work to develop a plan where there's gonna be sort of more...
Yes.
Okay.
So, this is kind of, we're moving forward to Class V now, so it's a little more involved. We, 10 rounds at the hospital, Brian's in contact with the hospital a lot, talking about different calls.
Okay.
Kind of bringing it to the next level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Only one?
Just that front page, right? That's all you signed?
Right next to you, Nick.
You get it? You get it?
Take it back now.
Hand-delivered and everything. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Mike Dempsey to present and discuss the resident benefits
Hi, Mike Dempsey for the Groveland Conservation Commission. So, I shared a summary, set of summary items on Beezy Park that I gave to Denise, and hopefully you got a copy of that. And this document lists the mission of Beezy Park. You know, Beezy Park has been owned by the town going on 22 years now, and I think when it was first purchased back in 96, there maybe were questions about its viability and long-term sustainable nature of it, but I think after 22 years that certainly we've proven that the park can take care of itself. So, besides people using the park for the benefits of open space and trails and walking and other means of passive recreation, some of the groups that use the park, such as the Girl Scouts, Penn Tucket Schools Programs, Bagnell School, Groveland Garden Club, Library, VFW and American Legion, Penn Tucket Football Parents, and our own Recreation Committee and Open Space and Trails Committee, a lot of things go on there. These groups are regular users, either on an annual basis or regularly hold their meetings at Beezy Park. at V C Park. Then we have direct community events that benefit all of the residents of Groveland, like the Annual Winter Festival, we talked about that last time, the Annual Art Weekend with the Wine and Art, we've got a summer camp going on there now, a couple of other items Bagnell School does and the Bagnell Educational Foundation runs an event there. So there's a lot of, a lot of the community groups besides using the facility for their own meetings also hold events there that anyone in the town of Groveland can take part in. We also provide, and this is significant, I think, because it's an unusual thing, we provide housing for three families at the park. So there's three units of what I would call affordable housing, even though it's not listed as affordable, but it's affordable housing for these three families. We rent to other community groups like the Merrimack Valley Philharmonic Orchestra, a dog rescue group. And then another great thing about V C is that we have affordable hall rentals. So for people that are having private parties, weddings, showers, reunions, memorial services, it's not easy sometimes to find an affordable hall to rent, especially in the Groveland area, there's just not a lot out there. So we provide that. And then local businesses such as Chesterton, TD Bank and others use the facility and support us. As you see in front of me is a list of many supporters from our 2017 Wine and Art and Art Weekend. Great, great support from the community. So I talked a little bit about, in the document, I talked a little bit about our budget and some other issues I'll come back to. And then finally, in the end, it's just some quotes from local Groveland residents who support us and have been longtime users and supporters, some going back to the very beginning of V C Park. So just a little bit more than I want to talk about the budget. In there, I talk about the fact that we have a budget of $90,000 per year, and this is based on our expected income as follows. So our regular rents for office space and the apartments are about $55,000 a year. Our event rentals, and these are parties and showers and weddings, come to, our goal is about $25,000 per year. And then donations and fundraisers are about $10,000. So that brings us up to the 90,000. Now, that's not fixed. So, you know, somebody look at this and say, wow, gee, they get $90,000 a year. But unfortunately, it's not a fixed amount. We have to work very hard to generate that, especially the event rentals and donations and fundraisers. And typically, on any given year over the past three or four years that we've had a budget at this level, is we don't always make that amount. So we don't always spend $90,000 because we don't always take in $90,000. It's a revolving account that V C runs under. So, you know, every year, the, any extra money that's in the account stays there, but we cannot close the year in a negative deficit. That's right, Denise, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so we always have to have more than zero in there at the end of the fiscal year. So we try not to go overboard as far as spending is concerned. Our fixed expenses are, include our buildings manager, our events manager and cleaner, heat, utilities, promotion costs and office expenses, really not extensive expenses. Our other place that we budget is for repairs and capital improvements each year. We put aside money to do one or two special projects. So for instance, this past year in 2017, we planned on a rehab of the bathroom at 199 Washington Street, that's the, one of the residences, and also to put a new floor on the stage in the great hall. So we did these two things based on our plans and expected donations, some of the donations that we would receive from the Wine and Art. And then unfortunately, in late November, we found out that the furnace quit on the other residence, one of the other residences, the Good Shepherd Cottage, and it had to be replaced. So in December, we replaced this, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, cost us an additional $8,000, which we weren't expecting to spend this year. So that's kind of how it goes, you can kind of get an idea. Things have not really changed over the last 22 years. We've always been working off this revolving fund, projecting how much money we get in from our rentals and fundraising and then trying to not spend at all and maintain the So I know we met two years ago and we got a couple of suggestions. One was to increase the amount of event rentals that we had, and we've done very well by that. Our current events manager has done a great job in increasing the amount of event rentals that we've got. So we're doing very well. And I think in fiscal year 2018, we will make our goal of raising $25,000 towards that. She and the group that do our Art Weekend also did a great job. We had a goal of $10,000, which was a lot more than we have ever raised from the Art Weekend. And we were able to get, I think we got somewhere around 75, a little high towards almost $8,000. So that was good. So we are working hard to increase the revenue where we can. I think that, you know, one of the issues that we have is the increase in the insurance. As I mentioned previously, again, I've been working with Denise to try to come up with helping out, helping the town pay for it. I don't see how we can realistically pay for our own insurance, but we, I think we're willing to contribute as we can, especially this year. I'm hoping that we can generate enough extra money by June to be able to make a payment towards the fiscal 2018 cost of insurance. And then, you know, going forward in fiscal year 2019, you know, I'm not sure what we can pay. If, you know, depends how you want to do it with your budget, if you're willing to take our best case of how much we can help, you know, we're going to look at raising our rents if possible, but we don't think that we can probably generate more than about $1,800 per year by raising the rents this year. But that's a possibility, so we might be able to generate a little more money towards the insurance costs. And so I'm sure that you'll be talking more about this as you talk about the budget, and I'm more than happy to, you know, work with Denise and talk about it more with you as we go on. Two other items that I'll highlight, one is handicapped accessibility. Handicapped accessibility, we are excited and we've been excited about making the facility more handicapped accessible, because we feel that not only would it help people, help local residents who try to get into the building, not, about half of the building is accessible and about half of it isn't. So we'd love to have the whole building handicapped accessible. Of course, the, probably the biggest, biggest block to that is the cost. The cost is high. And we, because of the way that the state designates it as a conservation property, which normally wouldn't have buildings on it, we cannot increase the footprint of the building by putting a ramp on the outside of the building. That would be a simple solution, unfortunately, we can't do that. So most of anything we're going to do with handicapped accessibility has to be done within the building footprint. So we are getting a free advisory service to come and take a look at the building and see what exactly could be done to increase the accessibility and then maybe what the cost of that would be. It's more of a long-term project, I think, that we have to think about it as. And then the other one is the driveways. If you've driven up to the park, you know that the roadway going up to the park is in very bad shape. It's been that way for a number of years. We, you know, I think we're close to having the place be almost inaccessible because of the, just the beating that the roadway takes. I think the roadway, I don't know, I've done a little bit of research, but it's at least 30 or so years, if not, if not even older than that. So it's to be expected that it's in such crummy shape. And so we didn't really know what could we do about this. So I did talk to Georgetown Community Preservation Committee, and because of some changes in the Community Preservation Act, we're able to do something like this, potentially using CPA recreation category funds to resurface and rework the driveway and lots up there. So Georgetown did the same thing, they fixed a similar problem at Camp Dennison in Georgetown using CPA funds two years ago. So I have worked with Barbara Arcalion and put in a grant application for CPA funds this year, and of course, Town Meeting will have to approve that in April. And if they do, then we'll be able to hopefully take care of that problem.
When did that change take place?
Well, actually, it took place about five years ago.
And why couldn't we use that to pave the pines? CPA funds to pave the pines?
Um, yeah, you probably could. It's just a matter of writing it the right way.
Well, now Bagnell, we were only going to pave a portion of Bagnell for the recreation, with the recreation money, but if that's an option, we could submit that next year to do the whole parking lot.
I don't know about Bagnell.
Well, it's our recreation program.
Yeah. Well, again, it's perhaps, it depends how you write the grant, you know.
Such as?
Well, it would be an easier case to argue for, like, the pines.
Right, but we-
Because it's a recreation area, it's a longstanding recreation area. You just don't want to make it look like you're going after these recre-, you know, you need to do it, so you're going to go after recreation funds by calling it a recreation area when it wasn't really a recreation area.
Well, the Bagnell's been a recreation area since the summer program.
Yeah.
And now we just redid all those fields to make it more user-friendly as a recreation area.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I think it could be done. You know, it's a possibility.
Who would write that?
Anybody can write it.
Well, I'm not going to write it, but you seem to know how to write them, so.
I know. It would be nice if someone from the Bagnell School or the Recreation Committee could do that.
I mean, as far as, you know, what you get for use, I realize that the V C Park road up there is terrible.
Yeah.
But the school gets exponentially more use.
Oh, yeah.
So as far as paying for the buck, that would go a lot further. So if someone listening would like to take on that, to write a warrant article for that.
It's not until next year, though.
Yeah, right, now, now would have to be done. You know, if somebody could do it the end of 2018, then we could tap into those funds in 2019, have it done probably sooner than it would get done any other way.
Well, the full, yeah, because we only have funds to pay part of it.
Correct.
That was left over from the summer program or something, right?
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So I think that's all I have to say about V C Park. I firmly believe that V C has many benefits to town residents and, you know, I mean, I'm surprised that anybody would even ask the question. It's like, because hopefully, more and more people know about the park and more and more, clearly, I think I've seen an increase in the use of the park by residents, especially over the past two years, that we've rarely been going out there and soliciting people to use it.
So back to the insurance question?
Yes.
So V C or your group was covering the initial insurance before you were notified? No?
No. We've never paid for insurance.
All right, so the question became, when it tripled? Is that what happened?
Excuse me. The question became, V C had very minimal coverage on the facility. The belief was, which we can talk about again, the belief was that when it was deeded to the town, it was not to be maintained. If it fell apart, it was to then be removed for open space, if you will. So there was only demolition removal insurance on the entire structure. So when they, when they came out, after we had a claim of $300,000 for roof, when the roof leaked in 2015 and they had to repair all the electrical and all that, it involved relocating the tenants that were in there and that sort of started this whole thing of the insurance company investigating that property into all the different uses. At that point, they said, they will no longer cover us on a municipal plan, we now had to get private insurance, which yes, has now, because we had minimal coverage on the building under our municipal plan, now we have an annual policy at about $14,000.
And you had planned to somehow help the town pay for that? Is that what I heard?
Yes, I mean, we're, this year, like I say, I'm hoping that we'll have some money left over at the end and be able to contribute that. That was the agreement that Denise and I came to, because it was the middle of the year that this whole thing cropped up. And then the same thing when, you know, going forward next year, I don't really know what to say about it is, you know, some of it will depend upon what your board thinks about it.
All right, so we have a deficit in that line, which we will need Town Meeting to transfer to cover. I did request an increase in the budget submitted for next year, but I don't know what our actual municipal insurance plans will come in yet, so I don't know if that'll be enough to cover both plans or not at this point.
Do you know when that's due? The insurance plans? When those will come in?
Yeah, they usually come in in March.
Okay. Yeah, good.
Do you provide a cash flow statement to Denise, at least showing the cash in and cash out for the V C Park?
Yes, I mean, it's all, it's all in the town financial system.
Okay.
We don't keep our own system.
Okay.
So it's all in there. And then every year, I have to do a report for the annual town meeting that shows, you know, all the money we took in and where we spent it.
Okay, thanks. My only other concern is in terms of CPA funds for repaving over at V C Park. So if you ask the town, I mean, obviously you'd pay them, but I don't know what the amount of workload is in there. And I think sometimes we have the highway department doing a lot of projects when it sort of takes away from their primary duty. So I'm, that's my only other thought about that.
Well, I don't know that it would be the highway specifically, it would be using the town's contract. So we have a contractor that has an annual paving bid. So my guess is if you're working with Bob, he gave you the price from our annual contract, which would be Brock's coming in to actually do the physical work.
Oh, okay, so it's not actually the town doing it, it would be Brock's?
The town will help us, the town will do some of the engineering, you know, I've already worked with him.
They'll do the drain, raise the drainage and things like that.
Yeah.
The town will do those things, but as far as the actual paving.
Okay, thank you. Oops.
Can you go up to the podium?
My name is Jim Logan, but I live on Johnson's Pond, which is V C Park is my neighbor. I just wanted to let Michael know in case he doesn't, and the selectman here, that the pond is used more than you think. Right now, as of yesterday, where the weather was good, we had well over 50 people on the pond ice fishing. And every Saturday and Sunday, you, if the weather is good, you will see them out there catching bass and or pickerel. And I just wanted to mention that to you, Michael, because it is used, V C Park is, I see more and more traffic. see more and more traffic. I think it's good that VC Park is being used, but I just wanted to bring up the fishermen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, you have anything?
No, um, when you said, and I know you kind of directed it toward me, because I brought up the benefits to the park.
Yeah.
And I wasn't trying to make you come in here and put a big display on and what have you.
No.
The point is, is benefits to the park, a lot of the stuff, you, the fundraisers to make money to keep the park open, fair to say, you have to-
Well, yeah, the fundraisers that we have, but we don't-
Right, and you have to keep the park open. My original conversation to you was letting the town people know the park is there. PR, that's all I was talking about. I wasn't trying to undermine you and your committee or what was going on. I was saying more on the PR part of it. Let the town know what it can be used for. Let them know what's going on up there and whatever. So that was my original thought. The insurance is more money, because we now changed the use of that property. We have rental homes, rental buildings, so the insurance has gone up. In, in fairness, it has gone up, because we're not using it for what originally it was going to be used for. But, I mean, granted, you had to come up with money to fix the heating system, et cetera, et cetera, gladly that you guys had the wine and arts and made the money, that's all good stuff, for sure. But raising the rents, are the rents up there to the, the average rents for what they're renting homes in Groveland for?
Yeah, the rents are at market levels.
At market level? So, I mean, you've done something there to try and help that? I mean, it sounds like you guys are doing everything you can do, but it's not that I'm sitting here trying to undermine the park. The point I was trying to make is, maybe we should have more of these conversations and have come in, but I don't think the park has enough PR. And that's what I was trying to originally say. It seems like if we could get more PR somehow, maybe, you know, more of these meetings, more like, you just came in and said what you said. I mean, hopefully, it would be a good thing, you know what I mean? That's what I was trying to say originally.
Yes, well, that's why I figured based on, you know, I, we had the discussion at the last meeting, and I think we talked about it before, but I thought that since you brought it up, it would be a good time to publicize more for the town people what it is we're doing. And, and you know, as you say, we never can get enough publicity about the facility.
Right.
So every opportunity that, you know, we can get to do it, it's a good thing.
Right, and, and going forward on the road, yeah, I mean, if, if you can get, you know, CPA money to do the road, that's a great thing, for sure. Like Mike said a minute ago, there's so many people in town that could use CPA money, but they don't know the real, the real, what you could really use it for. Like you said, you went to Georgetown, talked to them or whatever.
Sure.
There's more work that needs to be done down the pines, we could choose some money down there. I mean, hopefully, it would work out, you can get that. Again, maybe tonight would help with the conversation we're having, and people would get on board and understand what needs to be happening. This is the conversation we should be having.
Yes.
Let the people know.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All set? All set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Town Administrator-Town Manager Discussion. Bill, I think this is something you wanted.
Yep, so the reason I wanted to bring this up is because I know we're going to have to have Town Meeting change the description, however you want to say it. I think it's come time in the, in the Town of Groveland where we need to have someone here more, and I'm not trying to undercut anyone or say anything. We have a Finance Director, she's here, she does way more than she should be and should have to do. She actually probably acts like a, a Town Administrator and what have you. I think it's time that this town really needs to go to the next step. And I say that because we have some appointed boards, we have some elected boards, and we have a lot of, I gotta be careful how I say this, but mismanagement that could be clearly taken care of by having a boss in a position. And I think that it's come down to that our government needs some major overhaul on the infrastructure of it, and I think that it could start by starting out with either Administrator or Town Manager. I think there's more direction, I think there's more focus, and I think it gives the person the right amount of authority to do what needs to be done.
Oh, I agree. I think regardless if it's Denise or whoever is in that position, I think that having a Town Manager is an appropriate time for the town to look at it. There are smaller towns with less people and less business in town that have Town Managers and have had them for a while. So I think from a continuity standpoint, I think from a structure standpoint, I think from an oversight standpoint, it's something that the town should seriously look at now.
And Denise, I'm not, I'm not saying this to, you know, make you, you work well over what you belong. I think everyone in the Town of Groveland knows how much you work, and you love your job, you're here at 6:30 in the morning and et cetera, et cetera. I, I've worked with you directly, and I know how hard you work, and it's got nothing to do with you directly. And I'll tell you right now, if this position got in, I would say, put your papers in, because I, you know, I would look at you for hopefully to be a frontrunner.
Right, so if I can, so we've talked about this since I've been here. I, I think it's the right thing for the town. I think, you know, it's not about me, it's not about the Finance Director position, it's, I, I do think it's what should happen here. I think, you'll see Wes Newberry just made the change. I think the town has come a long way in four years, but I think to continue to professionalize our government and add that layer of, you know, management, I think is necessary. So I would, I mean, I would wholeheartedly support it, and if it's something the board wants to, you know, start working on, I can certainly get you contacts with Mass Municipal that actually has organizations that come out and would give you recommendations. There's a lot of small towns right now looking to make that change, just because of the reasons you articulated. You know, we're dealing with a lot of money, a lot of personnel, and to have it run by individual boards and committees and, and a Board of Selectmen that are here, and, you know, you all have jobs and other things to do, and it just adds another layer of continuity here.
Lisa, have any?
Yeah, I think that if we had a Town Manager, our legal fees would go down quite a bit, because there are certain sort of municipal laws and things of that nature that a Town Manager is supposed to be versed in. And there's a lot of sort of oversight that a Town Manager provides that with our current structure, we, we really can't do. So when I was on the Groveland sort of government group, I was in favor of a Town Manager, and I continue to be in favor of a Town Manager, particularly in view of the fact that the Board of Selectmen positions are volunteer. Most of us have full-time jobs and can't possibly put the amount of time and energy that really is required to run a town and have the knowledge base that would be required to sort of do the things that we need to do. So when we have personnel issues, when we have issues that are going on and we're having to always reach out to Town Council, I think that a Town Manager could play a different role and would have a different knowledge base that would sort of result in us not having to seek out Town Council as much, because right now, I think we're spending about $85,000 a year.
Is that what the budget is?
No, 65.
65.
And we just raised that, it was much slower.
And are we staying at 65?
Well, right now, we have some added expenses.
So about $65,000, but I know that for me, the amount of time that I put in in this role is significant, and I think if we had a Town Manager, there'd be a lot more pieces of that that would provide this board with a lot more guidance. And Denise provides wonderful guidance, but I think a lot of the times, it's not really her role to have to do all of that, so she's sort of functioning-
Or her authority in some aspects. So someone with that position would have the authority to make certain decisions without having us to convene every time.
Right, right, right. That's a good point. So I, I would be in agreement with that. And I guess, I would ask, Bill, what, what do you envision, do you envision us sort of researching that? Do you envision us drafting language to put it on the Town Warrant? What is, what are your thoughts about that?
Drafting language to put on the Town Warrant?
I, I would recommend, I mean, I would look at Wes Newberry's approach. They did a lot of community outreach, they held some public meetings specifically on that topic, just to really figure out where the town stood before it got to the point of a town, a Town Meeting article. It would require, I believe, a ballot question, because it would change the form of government here as well. So I would say you probably would not be ready for this Town Meeting, I think, but if, if that's something the board wants to work on, like I said, I can get you resources on-
Can we have that Personnel Advisory Board work on that? Is that something we could charter them with?
No, that's a separate.
Well, I think, though, not in, in its entirety, but I think as part of that, they could look at how, how we're sort of functioning.
Well, no, it's that, that role doesn't fall under the Personnel Advisory Board.
So job descriptions aren't part of that?
Well, I guess that's a question that you can look at, because that was added to my job description back when I was hired. Job descriptions and updating postings and things like that.
Okay, so I don't know.
So I, but I can give you plenty of them.
Yeah, I'd have to look-
That was just, you know, if we already created a committee to do stuff with the personnel bylaws, then-
Right, but again, the personnel bylaws only are for the employees that fall under the personnel bylaws.
And that wouldn't.
Correct.
That's kind of an overlay of the personnel bylaw.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Where you're kind of narrowing it in on one app, so.
I was trying to avoid setting up another committee. I can't do that, so.
Yeah, again, I don't, I don't know that you need a committee at this point. I think if and when you choose to go through the process, you would, you would form a committee made up of members of, you know, this board, the public, boards and committees to actually form a search committee when you're at that point. I think, like I said, I can give you plenty of resources.
Do you know about the person in West Newbury that is, was there one person that handled it, or you don't know?
No, the board. I know the board did-
The actual Board of Selectmen over there? I wonder if you can get me the, I know, I know a couple of them, but I want to get me their names and I'll make some phone calls and talk to them.
I'm sure Glenn would be happy to talk to you about it.
If I do that.
Yeah, go ahead. You don't have to ask twice.
Yeah, I know a couple of them.
Yeah.
I mean, I think my, my only thought, and maybe it requires sort of some more thought, but I'm on like three committees and, you know, that's, that's part of the reason that we need a Town Manager, is we can't set up a committee to do every function that we're supposed to do as a Board of Selectmen. So I don't know, you know, sort of open to ideas about how we would go about that. That wouldn't create more work for us at this point, because I'm pretty stretched.
I mean, taking something that's already been created from another town, similar to us, would be ideal.
Right, I think the job description's the easy part, because I can get you, you know, tons of those. I think it's the process and what you want it to look like. You know, I'm sure Glenn over in West Newbury would be happy to speak to you, Bill.
Right.
You know, and I'm sure, they were very public, it was in the paper, they had it on their website, sort of their process. I think that's something that you would bring back and talk about, if that's something you'd like to see. Again, getting the community involved, you know, you could send out a survey, you know, if you want to figure out what the town's appetite is, there's lots of ways for outreach. But I think if, if that's sort of a goal for, say, 2019, then you, we have some time to work on that.
So for me to go have a conversation with a couple of those, just to get the idea and get what they did and how they formatted and then come back, have the conversation here again, that's a start.
That would be helpful, because then we'd know, particularly if there was an outreach portion, we'd sort of know how we could proceed on it.
Right, all right.
Anything else? All set?
I'm good.
Okay.
As long as I get, I don't need to give you more work.
Yeah, I'll get you, no, it's, it's easy enough.
Just three names and I'll give them a call.
All right, so next up to formally, vote to formally open the Town Meeting warrant.
So I don't really know what that looks like, but this, I'm new to this, so what is it?
So we have to actually vote to open up that we're going to create the warrants?
You just have to vote to open so that people can start submitting warrant articles.
So I make a motion that we open the warrant?
Yeah.
Correct.
For, and then a date?
Yep, so I believe, so the warrant has to go out by April 13th. So I would say we should close it on, like, the 19th. I think that's your meeting. March 19th would be the date to close it.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we open the Town Warrant with a proposed deadline of March 19th? And the date of the Town Meeting is?
Town Meeting is Monday, April 30th.
For the Monday, April 30th Town Meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
So if anyone has warrant articles, I know Mike usually submits them, they should be submitted to me in electronic format between now and March 19th, please.
All right, next up is Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Discussion.
So as you know, we put this on every agenda now. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at your budget books, if anyone has any questions. I did leave you all a little packet. The school budget came in after you got your books. I will say, the budget that's in there for the school is not balanced. That document shows a deficit of about $650,000. I met with the school last week, and they've dropped that down to about $350,000 and have requested an increase to each of the three communities of about $100,000. I think ours was about $94,000 more than what's identified in there.
Do we know the reason why?
There's several reasons. They did articulate some of them in their cover letter, you know, special ed costs. I don't know if you all had a chance to read the email I sent you after the Regional Finance Forum.
Transportation.
Transportation costs, special ed. So with regional school districts, years ago, cities and towns were encouraged to form and participate in regional school districts. The state guaranteed 100% of transportation costs, because districts would be wider and costs would be larger. They are not funding those nearly to what they should be. I think they're about 30% of funding versus the 100% that's guaranteed under state law.
And the, from the paperwork you sent us, I read that they had a meeting in Boston on that, and they're hopefully going to get working on that.
Yes, and Senator Tarr's office sent out an update. So Senator Tarr, Representative Meier are very passionate about this. They represent several districts that are in, obviously, Penntucket, as well as other regional districts. Unfortunately, when it gets to the state, we are just outnumbered. Even though 170 municipalities in Massachusetts are in regional school districts, you know, Boston alone, I think they have 38 representatives, just, just the city of Boston. So when you get the larger cities together, they outvote all of the smaller communities, even as a whole of 170. I did speak, Selectman O'Neill wanted to start putting together a list. He wants to create sort of a communication between the regional boards of selectmen. There is a regional school sort of coalition, but there's nothing for selectmen or finance boards in these regional districts. He wants to start some sort of campaign to just communicate, you know, see if maybe we can find a way to band together and get some change as far as the state aid is concerned.
What would happen if we asked them three towns and invited them here to Groveland?
Yeah, we could invite, we could-
Put them on an agenda one night.
Yep, we could certainly invite them. The problem, though, still, there's just not enough representation with those districts compared to the other ones.
Right, in Boston, but just having that conversation with them, for us even with the high school project, and just having a conversation with the dialogue of the three towns and hear all some of their headaches, they can hear some of our headaches.
Yep.
I don't know if Mike would want to generate them?
Probably not the next one, only because it's probably short notice.
Well, so the hard part is, it would have to be an off night, because all three selectmen meetings are the same night.
Oh, really?
All three towns meet the same night. So I would say maybe you pick an alternate night to have sort of a working meeting with the other two boards. You can invite the finance boards if it's something, you can invite the school committee and just have a discussion on how to, you know, what we can do. Special ed costs have actually increased, just in our district, greater than that $650,000 deficit.
Maybe that night, it wouldn't be a bad idea to include Bruce Tarr and Lenny, Lenny to come in, the state rep, and have that, have him in that night, too.
Yep.
So you're talking about Merrimack and Wes Newberry?
Yeah, so the rise in costs of special ed, you know, we can't control when people are moving into the district with special education needs, but it does impact our budget significantly.
In that conversation, I know Bruce knows that we're outnumbered.
Mm-hmm.
And he was saying that we should get a coalition of smaller towns together to be represented as a big group, so maybe this would be the start of it.
So I don't know if you read, I attached to that last email, the State Auditor's report. So the State Auditor actually put together a report on the inefficiencies of the state budget when it comes to regional school districts. I mean, it is glaring, the fact that, you know, we are really short-changed when it comes to state aid and what we should be getting. So I don't know, I don't know that even that will, she was there, she spoke very eloquently about the need to try and get together and start a campaign and reach out to other communities and see if there's a way to get even non-regional communities to try and get on board with this. But it's really, it's dramatic.
Why would they?
Right, well, they, there's no, right, there's nothing in it for them. But something needs to change, and it's just, you know, the increase in state aid, the But something needs to change. And it's just, you know, the increase in state aid, they increased in the governor's budget. He proposed an increase and it meant minimally. I mean, it was about $50,000 more to us. Same thing at Penntucket. I mean, we're talking, you know, for a school district to get a minimal increase in state aid. We just can't sustain it.
Is there any benefit to working with some of the other regional high schools?
Working with us, how?
To collaborate as a group?
Well, again, they.
Like with Triton or?
Yeah, so that's, we met, I met with the Triton group and, but again, it's, we're just outnumbered. We've got to find a way to.
A way to get our towns, more towns, into a group.
That's what I mean, but if we work with the Triton towns, the Masconanic towns.
I think Denise is saying though, that even if we do that.
If we did all that.
Right, even if you take all 170 towns in Massachusetts that are regionalized, we're outnumbered at the state house because the cities have more representation individually as Boston.
Oh, there's more cities and towns, I think.
Outnumbers us. No, 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 because of the weight of how you have representatives. So the city of Boston has, I think, 38 different state rep districts. So that city alone has 38 state reps. We have one that we share with how many other towns.
Right.
So all 170 communities are smaller in size.
I got you.
So maybe we have, maybe we have 80 representatives among the 170 communities. We're just outvoted over and over.
Bruce Tarr has any ideas? What, what do we have that we could leverage for that? And I don't know what the answer is. If, if there's nothing, then we just continue to be marginalized in terms of the budget. I don't know what can be done.
I will say, so like I said, Senator Tarr, Representative Meera, the other senator and representatives that were there are very passionate. They said every year they submit bills, they just don't go anywhere. Because once it gets to the top, they're just cast aside because they just don't have the weight behind them. So I don't know. They are very, very passionate about it. They understand. I mean, people called them right out about it. You know, your politicians, how do we trust you? And they got very, they were very sincere on, on their fight for, for regional school districts. It's just they.
So it's one against 30?
Correct, correct.
Every time.
Yep, so that's a big issue with the school budget.
So even, even to have them come in and have us three, all towns get together, to let the town peoples.
Oh, yeah, you should still talk.
I definitely think it'd be a plus. And, and as long as I've been here, I know a lot of people say, well, we get into the school budget and we, and the school committee and what have you. We don't talk enough. I don't think it would be a bad thing.
No, I, I would agree. I think, you know, even if it's annual, an annual basis, you meet with the three communities, or all three communities get together and just, you know, we do share a school district and we do have a lot of similarities and a lot of the same complications and issues amongst the towns. So if one of them has a solution, you know, maybe it would work. Maybe there's regional services we can look at. There's plenty of things that we can do with the communities if we engaged in better communication.
Right.
So I don't think that's a bad thing. I, I think it's a good idea to have.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that for an off night and maybe March to give some notice.
Or maybe after town meeting, I don't know. We'll be in budget season and might be like a good early summer.
Yeah, sure.
Can't wait.
Yeah, early summer. Better place to be than a hot office room.
Does anyone have, have, have you guys had a chance to review anything?
I have not even had a chance other than flipping through that giant book to even look at anything yet.
Well, well, like I said, I'll have it on every agenda, so if things come up, if you.
When I need something to put me to sleep, I'll definitely pull that out.
The finance board is gonna start their departmental meetings. So they will likely meet with every department, board and committee again like they did last year. I did submit one of the things this year, in this packet, is, goes along with the budget. It's the Division of Local Services recommendation on our budget. That was, that's part of your correspondence. So you can look at some things that they recommend as far as the finished budget product that they would recommend seeing. One thing I would say on that, just because it goes along with the budget, they are recommending that we change the date of town meeting. They said cities and towns have been making it later in the year, that April is too early to have a town meeting because state numbers are not finalized until right before then.
So that would be for 2019?
If it's something the town wanted to change, yes. I would say that would be a good dialogue. I'm sorry.
What was their suggestion?
Their suggestion is late May or early June. I would suggest that's something you, if you plan to have a, you know, tri-town meeting, because all three town meetings are the same night because it all impacts Penntucket on town meeting votes. Two out of the three towns have to vote the budget and if they're not the same night, it could give one town an upper hand. So that might be something you want to talk with them about, but they do recommend, because, you know, revenue projections aren't really strong when we start, you know, six months into the fiscal year, we're putting together revenue projections and, you know, capital plan is done way too early in their estimate. So, you know, it's just something to look at, maybe pushing it back a little, giving more time to departments and then the committees to review the budgets before it's required to go to town meeting.
I think that's tough knowing that it would have to be more regional, so I don't know.
It doesn't have to, but.
Well, but if we are to have a fair process.
Merrimack is going through the same process of having the DOR come out and review their budget process as well, so she hasn't gotten the finished report. So she said when she gets it, she'll look and see if that's one of their recommendations for them as well. But again, that's something that you could certainly talk to the other towns about and see if that's something that they would entertain.
When we're, when we're going into our budget season, do you think it's benefit, I know I tried doing it before and it wasn't to benefit because not too many people showed, but have the finance board come in, have one night to talk to us, or do you don't think it's beneficial?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it depends when you want to do that. I personally, I would say that should be done before the process starts. Like in November, you all sit down and talk about what you see for next year, what you're looking at for increases. And then, you know, they could come in and make their recommendation to you when they finish the process. I don't know, like during the process, if they're gonna have much to report, but I think, I think every year before it starts, you guys should sit down with capital improvements and set some expectations and, you know, how you'd like to see the next three months of the budget process go. I think one of the recommendations of the DOR is to find, formalize a budget calendar, which we don't have, with deadlines and required dates that are in our bylaws that identify when recommendations should be made and budget should be submitted. And that's something you could work with those two boards with as well, to actually finalize the process and get it, you know, set in stone and put a bylaw in place.
Mel's up? Mel's up? You all set, Denise?
Yeah.
Uh, next up, we have vote to the board. You have a minute from January 8th, 2018.
Do we need to approve that?
Yep.
Liquor license?
No, so that's been removed.
Okay, sorry.
We're waiting on paperwork on that.
Got you. So I make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 8th, 2018.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Next up, executive session minutes from December 11th, 2017.
I make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes from December 11th of 2017.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Accept the resignation of Taylor Devlin as library assistant with the Langley Adams Library effective February 7th, 2018.
I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Taylor Devlin as library assistant effective February 7th, 2018.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Accept the resignation of Al Seavey as electrical inspector effective January 31st, 2018.
I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Al Seavey as the electrical inspector effective January 31st, 2018.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Next up, old business. Previous agenda items that the chair does not reasonably anticipate will be discussed. Bill?
No.
Lisa?
So I'm not sure whether this should go under old business or selectmen's time, but I want to make sure that we're being vigilant about the window that we have to address the marijuana issue in town because I don't think that we've done that. I had spoken to Denise about it this week and she had given me some information that basically we've sort of missed the deadline to, Denise, help me out here. So our option right now is to do a moratorium until fall town meeting, correct?
So the deadline to have a bylaw in place to restrict or limit recreational marijuana is April 1st. So obviously, we don't have a town meeting before then. And given what is needed to enact a true bylaw of this nature, I would recommend looking to put a moratorium in place. So a moratorium could be voted at the annual town meeting. The state will only allow moratoriums to be in effect through December 31st of this year. However, we have the, school will be requesting a fall town meeting and fall election, which we could place this on a fall ballot. So that'll give us some time to actually work out what you want to restrict in terms of recreational marijuana, what you want to put in place. There's certain limits, you can pretty much choose everything and anything. Because Groveland passed it at the ballot in November of 2016, 2016, we are required to go to the ballot to restrict it. So it would require a town meeting vote as well as a ballot question in order to put restrictions on that. With the moratorium, so it can be, it can be placed on our April 30th town meeting. We would, however, be subject if someone was to submit an application between April 1st and April 30th. However, there are some requirements that are needed in order to place that application that we have some control over. So we could theoretically take some extra time while we put those in place, waiting for town meeting to vote. The moratorium is required to go to the attorney general's office, but they are fast-tracking those because they know it's a time-sensitive matter. So it would still be, if it passes town meeting and it takes two months for the attorney general to review it and approve it, it would still be effective back to the date of town meeting. So at that point, we're pretty much covered. And anyone who, if anyone should submit a permit in that time, would have to wait to find out the results of the AG's determination. Again, that would sort of just put a hold on any recreational marijuana in Groveland until you had time to formulate a bylaw and get that through public hearings and to the voters. I did have a conversation today with Jim Freer, who's the chairman of the planning board. He is supportive of the moratorium. They would be required to hold a public hearing on that as well. I did tell him that if it's something the board supports tonight for your next meeting, I could have a draft ballot question for the moratorium, which if you voted on your next meeting, it would go to the planning board for public hearing in early March. That would ensure it would be on the April town meeting warrant.
So the moratorium just puts a delay on it?
Just puts the whole, so it puts recreational marijuana on a hold in Groveland.
What happens if we don't do anything?
Then somebody.
Then April 1st permits are allowed to be pulled for Groveland.
And what we voted on before wasn't binding?
No.
Correct. And what you voted on before was medical, it identified medical marijuana facilities on the ballot. So this is, because of the state law changes, April 1st, recreational marijuana becomes legal. So without doing anything, you could theoretically see requests come in for liquor stores to start selling products, shops to open up in town. I will tell you that right now, the communities that don't have anything in place, some of them are currently facing permits that are looking to be in the works for April 1st. We don't have anyone who's approached us at this point, but that doesn't mean that someone will not come forward and request a permit.
And that's just for recreational? That has nothing to do with medical?
Right, we already have a bylaw in place that identifies medical and where it can go in the zone. We have nothing that identifies recreational.
So does recreational mean they can sell recreational right in a liquor store?
Correct.
Really?
With the permit, yes.
Put something in place.
So I would like to make a motion that, you said it very well, and I'll try to reiterate what you said, that Denise draft the language for a moratorium for the board to review next meeting and if we take a vote on it next meeting, open it for public hearing in order that it may be placed on the town warrant ballot for April. Does that cover it, Denise?
Yes.
Can you clarify that is just recreational again, in that motion though?
If you'd like to.
A friendly amendment, because I want to make sure we separate recreational from medical.
So the moratorium to draft a recreational marijuana moratorium?
So just for clarification purposes, the bylaws that other towns are putting in are only really, I mean, the medical, you're saying that we already have a bylaw in place regarding medical marijuana?
Correct. So when medical became legal back in 2014, I believe it was, on the 2015, it was the 2015 annual town meeting, the planning board had a bylaw put in place that identifies where it could go, you know, the zoning restrictions. And it's actually a pretty lengthy bylaw. So that covers that, which if you'll recall, when we had someone approach us, it could only go in an industrial location.
So it doesn't preclude somebody from opening a marijuana, medical marijuana facility, just requires certain procedures?
Correct.
And the ones that we're seeing very frequently in the news right now, I think North Andover and Andover are related to recreational marijuana, correct?
So North Andover was related to a cultivation center. They actually wanted to build a whole cultivation center there. But yes, theirs was primarily recreation as well. Most of them because, because of the April 1st deadline and recreational being not as controlled as the medical side. The medical side is a very controlled component of this. Recreational can be candies and, you know, all sorts of things. So I think that's where cities and towns want to put more control over what can be sold in their community.
Okay.
So we have a motion. Do you want to?
I'll second it.
I'll.
Question? You mind?
You can go up to the.
My question is basically.
Could you just say your name and address again, please?
Jim Logan, Washington Street, Groveland. My question is this. If we do eventually pass the laws where recreational marijuana is acceptable, is there any laws in relation to driving while getting stoned, I'll use that word, and causing an accident or just driving inappropriately?
Like under the influence, impaired?
As far as those kind of laws, you don't see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because I'm kind of concerned about that.
Yeah, so according to some conversations I had with the police, there is training in order to identify someone who is under the influence of marijuana or drugs or something.
But it doesn't always hold up in court. So right now, there is a statute that says that you can be arrested for impaired driving. The, the question becomes, how do you test for impaired driving? And what Mike is referencing is something called the Drug Recognition Expert, which is pretty expensive to get somebody trained in that. But it is something that's available, but it's not 100% either, because it's still being challenged in court as a valid way to test for, you know, marijuana impairment.
But just because, you know, we don't pass recreational use in town doesn't mean the surrounding community can't pass it. And they could be driving through our, so just because we do something doesn't mean the surrounding towns are gonna do the same thing. Right, but I mean, if they're in, you know, across the bridge and they're buying and using it over there and they want to get to the highway, they're coming through here. So you can't ultimately control what people are doing in another town coming through our town, so. There are concerns about that. And I know that, like Lisa said, there, it's kind of up in the air on whether or not you can be held up in court as far as a justified means to kind of determine someone's inhibition based on drugs of that type. But I'm, I know that the state is looking at that as well. So right now, it's drug recognition program, which I know Chief Gillen is looking into, but it's not like taking a breathalyzer. We can have a legitimate reading on somebody's breath alcohol level. No, but it is a concern for everybody. Did we vote on that?
No.
No.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, Selectmen Reports. Lisa, you have anything from the committees you're on?
The Elm Square Committee is working on looking at the disparity between two different appraisals to sort of arrive at what a reasonable value is of the Elm Square property. So that's kind of where things are right now. And then Community Preservation has a meeting on February 15th.
May I report on Bill's time?
No. Yeah, go ahead.
So the School Building Committee, we've been meeting quite regularly. The next public, like full public meeting on it is this Wednesday at 6:30 PM at the Sweetsour School in Merrimack. This meeting will be to review the preliminary design plans and preferred options for the building project. So last Tuesday, we were presented as the building committee with 10 options for that location. So some of them are just renovating the high school, renovating the middle and high school, building a new high school only, building a new high school, middle school. So there are different scenarios of location, all on the existing site, but placement on that site, what the buildings might look like, what the structure would be. So there are 10 options that we will be presented on Wednesday. would be. So there are 10 options that will be presented on Wednesday, and they will be looking for some public feedback. And then the following-
What time is that meeting, Denise?
6:30. And it is at Sweetsour School. It was originally published to be at the town hall, but their elevator is not functioning. So it is at Sweetsour School. The following Tuesday, we have a joint school building committee and school committee meeting, where both groups, the school committee and the school building committee, are expected to vote on which plans to put forward. We are not allowed to pick one. We have to narrow down 10 down to three or four, which we will then submit to MSBA. And over the next few months, we will then build out those three or four designs into full cost estimates to figure out which one will then move forward. But you will have a chance to see the designs, hear from the architects, who will go through a PowerPoint on the designs. They are hoping to film that and have that available to us to run for those who cannot make it. But it would be very informative.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to selectmen's time, I just wanted to acknowledge, we received an email today from Chief Gillen regarding sort of the heroic efforts of two Groveland police officers and the combined efforts of Groveland Police, Groveland Fire, and Trinity with regard to a February 1 incident in which they used life-saving measures. So I just wanted to recognize them. I believe that was Steve Patron and Eric Gorski, but also the collaboration with the Groveland Fire and Trinity ambulance.
Yeah, there was somebody else involved in that.
It was a Newbury Port officer and a Georgetown officer.
Is that it? Bill, did you have anything?
And the selectmen's report?
Yeah.
Nope.
All right, next up, we have correspondence. We have executive session minutes from January 18, 2018, minutes from January 18, 2018, minutes from January 22nd, 2018, letter to Alexander Smith, 28 Broad Street, regarding unregistered vehicles, Division of Local Services review of town budgets, document as part of the Community Compact Initiative, letter from Lieutenant Governor to congratulate the town on completing the first round of best practices through the Community Compact. And now is finance or rectory's time.
Just one quick item. So along the lines of the Community Compact, today, we were awarded a $15,000 grant from the state, which I applied for, I think I told you about it at the last meeting, to help update our personnel policies. The first order up has been our drug and alcohol policy, which is extremely outdated and did not identify steps to take with positive results. So council is reviewing that. We have outdated sexual harassment and discrimination policies that will be updated. And then, it will be available for the Personnel Advisory Board when they have drafts to review with, through town council. If there are other policies, we could certainly bring a consultant in. We have two years to spend this $15,000 on updating our policies. So it was good news for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
Next up, we have selectmen's time. Bill?
Question for Denise. You know the bulletin we get, the, it's the state bulletin that comes to selectmen's-
The Beacon?
Yes.
The Beacon. Have you ever tried to advertise in the job for the planner in there?
I don't advertise in the print because it only comes out monthly. We advertise in the website version.
Okay.
So it's updated daily.
Okay.
Yeah, by the time that comes out, the job's usually, and they're obsolete.
Oh, really?
Just because it's so, it's only monthly.
Okay.
So, but we do advertise through them on the MMA's website.
And how about anything on the DeHula thing at all?
Yeah, so we will need to regroup and discuss that and figure out how we want to move forward.
Are they still interested in it, or no?
To be honest, I haven't talked until we got the last information from town council.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Lisa?
I accidentally did my selectmen's time in that other section, so I'm, I'm good.
No, I think that fell under old business.
Oh, the, my only thing was the police department.
Oh, okay. We'll dock you pay. I don't have anything, so we get a motion to adjourn at 8:04?
Motion to adjourn at 8:04.
Just to note that the next meeting will be Tuesday, February 20th. Is Monday holiday?
It's President's Day.
Wish I got that off.
I know that I'm not gonna be here.
All those in favor?
Got you. Are you around that week? Isn't that school vacation week? You're gonna be around?